Good morning. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee at the Hall. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I’m the Chair of this committee, and I am joined today by Councilmembers Andrew Johnson, Yang, Quincy Goodman, Frye, and Pal Masano, and together we are a quorum of this committee. We have three items on our discussion agenda. The first is, I believe, a short item, but it always seems to stimulate a little discussion. So I’m going to ask Mr. Carl to please present the 2016 proposed City Council and Committees’ calendar. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Madam Chair. May it please the committee staff is here to present the draft 2016 Council Standing Committees’ calendar. Copies should be before you at the desks. Extra copies are available with the clerk. The calendar shows those dates and times that have been identified for regular meetings in 2016, both for the full City Council for its standing policy committees, as well as for the audit and executive committees, which are independent committees. The annual calendar of meetings serves as public notice required under Minnesota Statute Section 13D .04 subdivision 1. Copies of the adopted calendar are posted on the bulletin boards located outside of the council and clerk offices, and data is also posted about these meetings to the city’s website via our Legislative Information Management portal. As in the past, the draft 2016 calendar was prepared using guidelines that respect the observance of various holidays, significant dates, and planned events and activities. It also reflects the input from council members, particularly the chairs of the various standing committees, and the coordinators in the clerk’s office. For 2016, the draft calendar reflects the following details: A total of 23 regular meetings of the City Council, which is equivalent to what has been programmed in each of the previous three calendar years; A total of seven designated Ward Work Weeks, which matches the number of such weeks in the current calendar year; A total of 11 holidays that are recognized by the City of Minneapolis and are denoted on the calendar with hearts. The legend at the bottom of the page identifies the specific recognized holidays. There are also five significant dates that are included on the calendar based on prior policy direction from the City Council when public meetings by the City of Minneapolis are not to be scheduled. These are denoted on the calendar with an X. In addition, the annual conferences for the National League of Cities are shown on the calendar identified in parentheses. The dates for those conferences are March 5th through 9th, and November 16 to 19 in 2016. I’d like to thank all of the council members and committee coordinators for their work to finalize this calendar. Each year, we’ve gotten a little bit better at bringing it forward earlier in the year, and that in turn helps city departments to plan their work activities for the next succeeding year with greater lead time, which makes the entire enterprise work a little bit better. So, thank you to all of you for your help and assistance in getting this done in a timely manner, and with that, I’ve completed my prepared remarks on the 2016 Draft Council Calendar Committee.
Thank you. I am going to ask if—I’m sorry, I’m not up in my speaker management. I’m going to ask if there are questions or comments on the draft, which hopefully will soon not be a draft—Council Calendar. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I’m just wondering, Casey, did you vet this issue of the last council meeting of this year is like a month from the first council meeting of next year? And what happens if there is—and in CD, we often have bond issuances, or what’s going to happen?
So if we needed to conduct a special meeting, we would have ample time to provide that notice and call a special meeting. You’ll note that on this year’s calendar—which sadly, I don’t have in front of me—we do have an extra council meeting scheduled in a week where there are no committee meetings, and we did that as a placeholder in case there was business at the end of the year that needed to be done. At this point, as we’re approaching November, what I’m hearing from committees and from departments is that we likely will not need that meeting, and so we could cancel it. We just didn’t program in the extra meeting for a full council meeting in that last week in this year’s calendar. And to be clear, we had not done that in previous years. This year’s calendar is the first time we’ve added an extra meeting at the end, so we typically haven’t needed it.
Madam Chair. Perhaps Council President Johnson, just with her knowledge of the system—I mean, isn’t that last meeting like the 19th of December? And is it possible that we would not have a single—I, God, I just can’t imagine in CD we wouldn’t have something between the 19th of December and the 15th of January? Has this been vetted?
And I’ll just kind of add in, as someone who used to chair the Regulatory Services portion, which is the one that kind of had the most items come up, this was always a challenge and concerning because of the big gap in being able to issue so many—
Licenses.
—things that feel frankly, a bit administrative, but go through the council process. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And actually, I think Councilmember Goodman, we had an equally large space this year. If I remember correctly, I think our last council meeting was perhaps the 12th or something like that, and we didn’t meet until mid-January. So—but I—you know, I do think it is a good idea to program in a meeting of potential meeting, and then give staff a heads-up, “We’re going to cancel it if we don’t have issues,” you know, so that people have notice to make holiday plans.
Oh, no, I agree, Madam Chair. Council President Johnson, I have agenda setting at 11 today, so I’ll talk to Reg Services’ staff directly and ask them to try to plan for—I agree, that’s not exactly a big sidewalk café approval month. But—I mean, if you’ve seen the Reg Services agenda, there have been, on average, 10 licenses, new licenses or expansion licenses every single meeting, except for this one where there were 10 land sales. So I guess if we had to have a meeting, we could do it to not hold people up, kind of in the theory of business made simple. I don’t think we want to have a month where we’re telling people, “You have to wait an entire month,” but I’ll note in agenda setting today that folks should pay attention to that.
And Madam Chair, if I might respond again to Councilmember Goodman, the other thing I think we, you know, should acknowledge is if we do have a meeting that is a meeting to act on emergent matters, that we will recognize that there will be people that won’t be there because they’ve made plans and that sort of thing. So we just need a quorum, obviously.
Madam Chair, if I might, given that discussion, if the council would like, before final action, we can program in—as we did this current year—a council meeting in that first Ward Work Week, which is the week of December 12th. We could program in a council meeting. It’s easier to cancel the meeting than it is to call a special meeting.
All right. So with that—which I think is some general direction we’ll kind of follow up on later—I’d like to go ahead and move approval of the calendar and the related items, which are about directing the clerk to post it and incorporate changes into the 2016 calendar as necessary to accommodate the work of the council. So with that, all in approval. Is there discussion? I’m not seeing it. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carl. Second, we have a presentation from the City Coordinator’s Office. This is an update on enterprise racial equity work, and I will note for colleagues that there is an associated staff direction that after the presentation, we can move—that is authored by myself and Councilmember Quincy—that we have worked on with the Coordinator’s Office. So, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, councilmembers, for being here for this topic. My name is Noria Rivera van der Mide. I am Deputy City Coordinator. It still takes me a while to get the new title out. I am joined today by Joy Marsh Stevens, who is one of our new two dedicated Managers of Equity and Inclusion, who, along with myself, started with the city a little over a month ago. So today, I’ve been asked to let you know where we are on our enterprise racial equity efforts, and I wanted to—I don’t intend to go through—you’ve got a handout before you—I don’t intend to go through every one of the items bit by bit, although I’m certainly happy to respond to any questions about particular items, but wanted to start with the main focus areas, which in the past, the work has really focused on four main buckets, if you will. They have been procurement, recruitment and hiring, boards and commission, and then the development of a racial equity assessment tool—a tool—or set of tools, really, by which departments could guide their work, inform their choices as we moved on. As I mentioned before, we’ve been lucky in the Coordinator’s Office to have not just Joy join us, but Julie Leerson, who is also a Manager of Equity and Inclusion, and will be concentrating her efforts primarily in the community, initially with the Promis Zone, but with the notion to continue to look for strategies that will work across citywide. As I move towards—we wanted to keep it in the buckets, and I’m going to talk to you a little bit about how I’m presenting the information. You’ll see two colors. One is in yellow, the others are in shades of blue. I wanted to denote for council, the yellow items were the items that had been initially worked on in the past, the main focus of a group that had been comprised initially of civil rights, CPED, NCR, and human resources throughout the city. And those are in different stages of action and implementation, in part because we’ve also transitioned a lot of the racial equity work now to the Coordinator’s Office as a place that goes across departments and has the power of convening to really bring departments together. So as we look at the first one, which is the Racial Equity Assessment Toolkit, there had been some discussion and some work performed on moving that forward. There had been a modified racial equity assessment tool that had been used for business planning. I will say that that same tool had been offered to departments, and departments had used it for purposes of budget as well. The city is also part of a liaison or of an organization, which is GARE, which is Government Alliance on Race and Equity, and it is a cohort—currently, there are several cohorts, but there is one in the Midwest—and a cohort of eight jurisdictions, including ourselves, and where we share best practices and what’s going on in other cities—St. Paul, Michigan, Iowa, there’s several—the Minneapolis Park Board Met Council, there are several jurisdictions in our cohort. And while that was the initial state of work there, I want to just note for your attention all the remaining work that has happened in the interim since we last met. There has been a series of training. There are a series of initiatives. I know for myself, I’ll highlight in Reg Services, we created a Racial Equity Champions Group. We have a three-point—or a three-pronged approach, where we want to do Train the Trainer and do a cultural assessment for staff, meet them where they are, try to make sure that we’re all talking the same language. But conversely, I also think that there’s a point where hiring managers require implicit bias training, where you have the power and the authority to move someone, promote someone, impede someone from getting promoted, then I believe there’s got to be some additional awareness of that. And in Reg Services, we had started using that tool. We had also contacted with the YWCA to do a Train the Trainer model approach as we moved forward. Human Resources has also been thinking about and contracting, looking for implicit bias training amongst themselves, looking to train HRGs and promoting that throughout the department. And I’ll make a point at the end of this presentation that you’ll see several departments are looking at similar items. Training is one, and where several departments seem to, on their own, siloed, looking at a variety of things that are similar. And one of the benefits, and I think one of the actions moving forward, and I think Ms. Stevens has done an excellent job starting to meet with departments, is really figuring out how do we align those efforts. Instead of everybody kind of doing it on their own, how do we come together, share best practices, know what resource or what company, what contract worked, what didn’t, so that we’re not all wasting resources on very similar activities. As we move a bit to procurement—procurement in this sense, and you’ll see some of the—if you take a scan at some of the items that are included in them—we’ve called procurement kind of broadly at some point. I think we want to extend the concept of procurement to mean something along the lines of economic equity as well, and so there are things that will go beyond the scope of the initial procurement activity. There had been some work done to look at supplier diversity, and that has been started, but not yet moved forward with some specificity. There has been a lot of work in civil rights in particular to identify some regional and national compliance best practices, and that has been an exciting part there. There is some work happening with IGR that is looking at the Minnesota Statute 16C to understand, and that is the state procurement statute, to understand if we can broaden the application of that, or look at how that really does apply to our city procurement or supplier diversity efforts. The Assessors’ Office has been looking at figuring out how there are disparate outcomes on property valuation appeals, and that is something they plan to do in the future, and they’re hoping to do that in 2016. So there has been some initial work done on the topic, but more work needs to be done to consolidate and align and be more directive about that work in general. The next bucket has been recruitment and hiring, and as I mentioned, there has been also a lot of work by individual departments in this area. The initial items that had been worked on by human resources in particular really talked to recruitment efforts, making it easier for people to apply to be part of the city, revising the new hire orientation. But as that has progressed in the past year, year and a half, we have seen a movement towards really trying to get into the specifics of what departments do. The Police Department has revamped and diversified their interview panel for new police officers. I’m sure you will hear a little bit more about this with IT, as I believe Mr. Dahl is speaking to you afterwards, but they have done a whole lot of work with diversifying their workforce, and their work with people of color in particular, to see how we can attract more persons with technology backgrounds. There is a really great work being done between 311, 911, CPED, and Human Resources that is partnering with Community College to create pathways, and that really is focused on our 311 and 911 jobs. And so there’s been a variety of work in the background that has been worked on by departments, as the conversation around equity and what that means for us and departments really looks like. FIRE, I should point out too, has been extraordinary in their work throughout the community. Their work in particular with young kids—they’ve got a Pathways Program in North and Roosevelt that has been really extraordinary, and I know they are really proud of the work they have done there. In our last bucket, if you will, the original scope of work surrounding boards and commissions was figuring out strategies to ensure that our boards and commissions are adequately representative of our diverse communities, and there has been a lot of great work, I know, done by the City Clerk’s Office, done by NCR, to create more awareness, to train, to try to get candidates to come into and want to be a part of the city. More work continues to be done. I know Civil Rights has been working on trying to improve representation on the Civil Rights Commission. And in addition, as that work—and again, it’s the great—as we talk about racial equity and as the conversations have unfolded, it’s been a really great opportunity for departments at all levels to think about what does inclusion mean. And so while the initial work focus on boards and commissions started very narrowly, a lot of what we will turn our focus to will be community engagement and inclusion efforts that really speak to that as well, that speak to finding ways to be more inclusive with our work. There are a series of initiatives, some that are in various stages, again, some active, some pending. There are a variety of initiatives that involve translation of materials, that involve simplification of materials, that involve trying to get more resident involvement in the work that each department does. I know that there have been a lot of work with the blueprint for equitable engagement that NCR has done, and they have done extensive community engagement. I believe that will be going forth to council, if not by the end of this month, by November, as that moves forward. There’s a series of creative city-making conferences that have been coordinated efforts between intermedia arts, the City Coordinator’s Office, and individual departments to figure out how to bring an artistic voice to some of the work that we do. Electoral engagement is one of them, and that is one that’s involving the City Clerk’s Office on how to nurture a culture of electoral engagement. IT similarly has another project themselves to increase access to computers and increase technical skills throughout communities. I am very proud and excited to talk about Tenant Voices, which is an initiative that started in Reg Services, which has a really interesting theatrical approach to figuring out and trying to lend the tenant’s ear to some of the work that we do throughout Reg Services. I also wanted to speak a little bit and highlight the work that the Health Department is doing in this area. Health, in general, has been a department that has been very culturally aware of how their work affects communities and how their work can impact communities as they move forward. I want to say that having worked so closely with the folks in environmental health, the work that they’re doing, particularly for trainings with restaurant owners in cultural communities, is extraordinary. They are offering, the first time, a Somali restaurant security food safety class in Somali. They have done a lot of work with the Latino community in terms of the similar issues with how do you—both how do you keep restaurant sanitation rules, what is to expect in an inspections process, but they have really done extraordinary work as we move forward in the area of racial equity. All this to say that there are a lot of efforts out there, and I’m really excited to see that the work has not stalled. I know that sometimes, in the absence of information, there is a sense that we have not moved forward on some of the works that departments are doing, and departments are really being conscientious about trying to serve the needs of their community, which is something that I know from my past hat, I try to do every day. I’ll let you know what’s next on our horizon, which I think, again, Joy has done a really good job of meeting with departments. She has been doing a kind of a scan and interviews. We believe that those interviews should be finished by mid-November of this year. We are planning, really, as you can see, of coordinating and better aligning the work that we’ve done—that we do as a city, because a lot of this cross-work could be really made more effective if we were actually sharing resources, trying to do things together, get efficiencies out of more collective work, if you will. We would hope to have a draft enterprise framework with initiatives, milestones, and timelines, ready to pass to departments and to council members by the end of November, mid-December. And what for us that means really is—from the stuff—or I shouldn’t say stuff—from the great work that has been put forward by departments, what does that mean? Where is the meat on the bones? We want to be able to really identify particular and specific activities and tasks of what that looks like, so that we can share with you and keep ourselves accountable for how we move forward with this work in the future. So it is our plan to, before the end of the year, to share a more detailed accounting of what we’re all doing and what that looks like for next steps. We also want to ensure that the work that we do is aligned between our internal facing—not just the team that—or the work that—I shouldn’t say team, because you are a person—a team of one—the work that Ms. Stevens is doing, but also aligning that with what the innovation team will be doing, as they are tasked with doing things and looking for initiatives with a racial equity lens, but also wanting to make sure that we align that with the work that’s being done out in community. And again, we have another manager of equity who is looking at Promis Zone, but really also with the lens of not just stopping at Promis Zone, but looking to see if we can scale some of those initiatives in other areas of opportunity throughout our city. So with that, I am happy to stand for questions.
All right. Thank you. I’d like to see if there are questions on the presentation, council—what was that? Oh, that’s—I’m also looking down the line here, so—Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just one thing I want to just put out there, and there’s some things I’m going to have to contact individual departments, because I’m not clear about some—in human resources, what micro-equity training is. I don’t know what that means. And I’m curious about the fitness. There’s a lot of emphasis on fitness, both in the police and FIRE, so I’ll check in on those. But the other thing that I’m really kind of interested in chatting with people who serve on some of our boards and commissions, you know, that we don’t get into the—we pointed out in this report that civil rights, you know, tries to really reach out into communities of color, and I appreciate that, and I’ve tried to help, you know, recruit people from my ward, and it’s a challenge for people who are working people sometimes to sit on boards and commissions, because they just don’t have the time. One thing that we’ve done in the past, and I really want us to look seriously at this again, is providing some sort of daycare stipend for people who serve on boards and commissions. We used to do that long, long, long ago, when I served on the Public Health Advisory Committee, and I had three little kids. That really helped, and you know, you can get away for an evening and do your community service and, you know, educate yourself. It’s a two-way deal. So I want us to look at that again. We did away with that during the terrible budget crunches in the early 2000s, but it’s a relatively, you know, inexpensive thing, and we do, I think, pay for parking for most people if they come in and have to park downtown, which is another thing. So I want us to look at that again. The other thing I want us to be careful about is not being focused exclusively like on civil rights. That’s where we have to, you know, make sure that we attract people of color. We need to attract people of color to CLECK, to the Planning Commission, to the Board of Adjustment, to the Heritage Preservation Commission. If one would look at the geographic makeup of those groups, aside from CLECK, where we have individual ward representatives, it’s an embarrassment, I will tell you. And it’s not like we don’t have qualified people of color in our community that are architects, planners, historians. So those are boards that are—it seems to me more aside from civil rights—more directly accountable to the council, and they really need to be looked at in outreach that is significant. So those are the comments I have, and I appreciate all the good work of staff across the enterprise. And as I see, I’ll look for some more specifics on these couple of things that I have questions about. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this report and update. I have to say, it’s a little bit overwhelming to go through and dig through all the lists and figure out what the actual things that are going on in all the individual departments, how do they connect, and how do they have to do with some of the past action that we’ve taken, like the resolution in 2012 to set up our equity assessment and our toolkit. So I’m kind of tracking and seeing how that connects. I know that a couple of the things that were also part of that resolution, one of them is identified that we would join the regional effort of Everybody In, and so I hope that’s continuing. I still am a representative on that group, and I know that they’re trying to push issues, especially with employment equity and disparities. When I was looking at what next steps are, I really appreciated seeing that we would get a draft enterprise framework with initiatives. It did make me wonder if that is the Racial Equity Action Plan, because we also committed as a council a year and a half, two years ago—I can’t remember when now—to develop a racial equity action plan, which is a little bit different than this inward-facing toolkit issues. So I’m assuming that’s not necessarily it. So you can clarify that, and then I’ll just ask one more question, because milestones and timelines were mentioned, and I think what would really be helpful also is what are objectives, what are the measurable outcomes we want? Are we trying to actually change the makeup of our workforce? What’s the change supposed to be? How are we going to measure success that our toolkit and all these efforts have made a difference? And I think we need to nail that down pretty soon, too.
Council Chair, Councilmember Gordon, thanks so much for your comments. And I want to say that this is—and I agree, when I first met with Joy and saw the compilation of all the work that’s going out there, I’d obviously heard of some of the efforts, but didn’t know all the departments—what all the departments were doing. And one of the things this is trying to illustrate in a very quick update is just the breadth of departments that are working on the issue, but we understand that by no means does this provide the detail and the mapping—the very correct mapping of how does this relate to some of the past council directives? How does this relate to each other? And how to better align, which is really something that we discovered as we were going through this exercise, that there needs to be a more coordinated effort to maximize resources. So as we move forward in the future, we will be trying to capture where those past directives have been and where they live in the very specific initiatives. As to your question—and we certainly will also be looking to figure out what those objectives and metrics and measurements is—we are a data-driven city, and we want to make sure that as we move forward, that we are able to somehow show that we are moving the dial on equity, because otherwise, we are sitting here doing good work that feels great, but we want to be able to show that it’s actually making a difference to community. As to the Racial Equity Action Plan, it is certainly something that I’m aware of in terms of a council directive. This initiative right now is meant to really address the framework of what the internal-facing stuff in the first place, but we are aware and conscious of the Racial Equity Action Plan, and will be as we move forward. Plan, and will be, as we move forward, talking to develop what that looks like and coming forward with where we think that directive can, should go, and what we can do for it. So we'll be addressing it.
And if I could, I was also noticing in the long list in the departments that are involved, all the work that's going on, and I'll just say that it was good to see that. I think sometimes we're up here and we try to be leaders and make policy, and really what we're trying to do is create some culture change throughout the enterprise, and we wonder if we've done anything to do that. And I think, even though we maybe didn't shift it really clearly in our ordinances and our policies as clearly as some of us, at least one of us, might have liked, I think we're saying, oh, we, staff, city workers, we were all eager to somehow engage in this work and get a handle on what's happening to help solve this problem, and I think you're showing that we have. There's one area that I didn't see much in the list, and I just want to highlight a little bit, which is this work that the Department of Justice is doing with the Police Department, and it's not necessarily the Department of Justice now, but it's a program and funding that they're offering. And we heard a presentation about implicit bias and working on implicit bias with the police force, and I think that's a piece of this work, and that implicit bias that hopefully the police force is working on is also something that comes up again and again. Here, I think, is that there is a bias we're not aware of sometimes when we're hiring, promoting, making decisions, budgetary decisions, and all these things. And so it might be something to add to the list, or consider it as it's pending work or work in progress, and also something that it might benefit the Police Department to have the equity team actually engaged in and reviewing and helping have another set of eyes on, even though we're relying on academics in far-off states of the country to help us.
Council Chair, Councilmember Gordon, one of the things that I wanted to highlight, thank you for reminding me to mention, that if you're not seeing a particular department, and police is a great example of that, it's in part because we haven't had an opportunity to talk to them. They are slated to meet with Ms. Stevens in early to mid-November, I'm not recalling the exact date, but one of the reasons that we weren't able to finish interviews was in part that we hadn't met with them. There are, I believe, just a few more departments left to complete the work, but once that work, it will be folded in and, again, mapped out, so that we include everybody's efforts into what we're doing.
Thank you. And so that's what the finalized department interviews by mid-November 2015 is all about?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Just wanted to first start out by just saying, thank you for doing some of the work here, and I really appreciate that, at least, you know, that the City Coordinator's Office is taking the lead on this now, and hopefully that's clear now to the enterprise. I wanted to echo Councilmember Gordon's point, though, that I'm kind of lost on all this stuff, you know? We're talking on a racial equity toolkit, we're talking about an action plan, we're talking about all these different things, and I thought I had a handle on this, but I mean, it just seems very unclear, murky, and then looking at the presentation and just seeing how every department is going every which way, I mean, I'm wondering, I mean, are we getting to a point where we have something that everybody can follow, or I'm not getting that part very clear here?
Council Chair, Councilmember Yang, you know, I'm glad to hear that. I mean, I, how policymakers choose to engage departments in equity work is completely up to council members. There has been a lot of different bodies and people and departments working on this work. Our goal moving forward, and we will present that to you as this progresses, is really to simplify a bit. There have been a lot of terms, Civil Rights has been working on it, there was Equitable Solutions, there is the Racial Equity Action Plan, there is the Promis Zone, there's a lot out there. Our job, I believe, in the Coordinator's Office, is to figure out how they all synthesize, really figure out how they're better aligned. One of the big aha moments was that precisely everybody seems to be doing a lot of work, but it's all over the place, and how do we figure out and get the benefit, maximize the benefits of bringing it together in one coordinated way? And that's precisely why we hired someone who can be at the helm of that organization, to be the convener, to be the coordinator of some of these efforts. So what we're hoping you'll see in our draft as we present forward in the future is precisely a much simpler, easier version to understand of what really is a complex, complicated, important issue.
Right. And my thing is this, that, I mean, if our goal is one Minneapolis by closing gaps, racial gaps, I just hope we don't overcomplicate stuff, that it just gets way too, too much that it doesn't keep our eye on the prize, which is, you know, the one Minneapolis, closing the gap season. So, I mean, I would just say that as, you know, some sort of cautionary message, that it just seems like it's way too complicated for just the average person, and, you know, and I'd imagine my colleagues here are, you know, a little bit more than average, and I think it's confusing as heck.
All right. I'm not sure that I'm seeing any other questions or comments here, so I will just say, thank you very much, Ms. Rivera Vandermeide. And I think, quite honestly, I think some of the questions that were posed about kind of the breadth of what's in here, which is more, I'm taking it just a little bit more of kind of where your staff is at in trying to do an assessment, is this is kind of the assessment, knowing that this, we had not had any report on this for some time, but your own stated direction of next steps, I think, is hopefully, in my mind, kind of getting at some of these more key things. How are we kind of getting better hold of this work, making sure it's connected to city work, not just a great project, and then how are we also making that move to connect the work to our results, Minneapolis, and other ways that we might actually then evaluate, is this being effective? And I kind of, you know, in a way, too, this reminds me of our budget discussions that we recently had with CPED, where we had some discussion about some really good programs, but we weren't sure how these programs that came up in the CPED budget were related to other programs that do similar things in other departments. And so I think it's a little bit endemic, maybe, to what we're trying to do in the city as a whole, is trying to figure out what's that good balance between allowing creativity and good programs to happen that are initiated by, acted to centralized decision-making at some point, so that we're not overlapping our efforts. So I'm going to, because we think we have to do two actions here, and I might just ask my colleagues a little quieter, if we can please move to receive and file the report, and then I'll move separately the staff direction. So with that, I'll move to receive and file. On approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And then, related to this work, and also, I think, as an effort to give some more direction to work around one aspect that has come up in this report, which is the supplier diversity efforts. Councilmember Quincy and I have been, over the last two years, really, meeting periodically with staff, trying to understand how we can get some firmer direction on this body of initiatives, and I want to thank the Coordinator's Office for stepping forward to help more firmly lead these efforts. I don't know if Councilmember Quincy has any comments on this. It is a long direction, that I will say again, that the Coordinator's Office helped us write, it has some options in it. I think the meat of it is, though, that they are going to put together with incorporating some of these ideas, a one-year and a five-year plan, so we're a little bit more focused and direct on what might be our efforts around supplier diversity, and then it says that there'll be a report back to committee of the whole on Ways and Means. I think probably Councilmember Quincy and I will just talk about what's the best place for the update. I don't know that we need it in both committees, and so we have been working very cooperatively on this. Any comments, Ms. Rivera Vandermeide, that you'd like to make on this, or from my colleagues?
Thanks for allowing us the opportunity. I don't have it before me to look at the language, but I will say that we have worked in conjunction on it. Again, having been in the Coordinator's Office a short time, one of the tasks that I've been given is to look at where we were on supplier diversity. I've pulled together an initial small group of people just to figure out, to catch up myself, and to figure that is, but I'm hoping as we move forward, and frankly, I hope that that's my, that's my usual approach for all, is that I don't like to start from scratch, I want to just move forward from where we are, so that we're not reinventing the wheel unless there is something that necessitates us moving backwards. So I'm hoping to take some of the direction that council has given the city and different departments in the past, moving that forward, and really trying to come up with specific directives on how we can kind of move the dial on this great, important work. Before you are topics that have come forward in the past, and they have been part of the previous directives, and trying to figure out and synthesize work with the various departments to be able to move that forward is really what our intent is.
Okay. Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. I, thank you, first of all, from the Coordinator's Office for taking this on as a, as a primary challenge. I think what you mentioned earlier, Council Vice President, was exemplified in the budget process. We know our departments are working on these goals, we know that they're all working together. And this particular initiative is something we've been talking about for several years, and it's really how the city does its own business, how it does its procurement, that was the, one of the top boxes there in your matrix, as well as how to have more companies participating in the process. So I think this is, putting it in the Coordinator's Office, coming up with specific timelines, and how we're reexamining how we do business with each other, and as well as welcoming in the economic development arm of CPED, how we can reach out and make small businesses more successful in the city. So I think it's a perfect staff direction. Of course, we wrote it, so of course it's perfect. But it is very long, it's very detailed, and it's really an outgrowth of a lot of work that we've already been doing, and talking to other departments. So I'm very appreciative of the specificity of the timelines and moving this project forward, although we've been talking about it for several years, we actually are seeing it in action. Now this just gives us the opportunity to demonstrate its success and be creative as we modify our existing programs. So thank you very much, Council Vice President, for your leadership on this issue, and the Finance Department and CPED, and including IT Department will be really working hard on making this actualized.
Thank you. And I'll just say, that's not all, because we have the Civil Rights Department and then the Coordinator's Office, so I think even just listing all of these kind of says why it's been difficult to figure out how to harness both the good work, but figure out a more centralized direction. So I'm going to, I'm not seeing other questions, I'm going to move approval of the staff direction discussion. Seeing none, on approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that item is approved, and thank you very much for the report. We are going to take one short item out of order. Councilmember Goodman has to leave in a few moments and has to give the report of the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee, so Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Dahl, thank you very much for giving me an opportunity just to do this quickly before agenda setting. One of the things, members, you'll note on the agenda is that there are, the first eight items are all land sales to the same person. This is a very unique situation that we have not had happen before, and we had a fairly thorough presentation in committee from Wilson Molina, who was, I thought, very impressive, had showed us photos of his previous work, is taking on eight properties in the fourth and fifth wards that are all in very tight proximity to each other, hoping that he can utilize kind of the ability to be close to do everything in a row. This is the first time we've done anything like this, I do think the staff have vetted it, and I thought the committee members were pretty impressed with his activities. So that would be items one through eight. Item nine is a bond issuance, ten are the regular license consumer services agenda. Item eleven is the project analysis authorization for the Wellington condominiums HIA financing. Item twelve is probably the largest item, one of the largest items we'll take up in committee this year, this is the allocation of almost $14 million of long-term housing tax credits to three projects, the Youth Link Supportive Housing Projects, Marshall Flats, Claire Housing and the PRG Portfolio One projects. This is a fairly significant allocation of resources for what looks like a minor item in committee. And item number thirteen is the environmental grant applications for fall 2015. There are maybe fifteen applications going in on a variety of projects around the city. Madam Chair, I'll also note that the clerk has informed me that the resolution from the Claims Committee with regard to the issue of the right of appeal was heard in Ways and Means this cycle, so will be on the Claims Agenda, on the City Council Agenda during this cycle. So that would be both Claims and Community Development.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions? Not seeing any. So with that, I think we'll turn to Mr. Dahl, and we will turn it over to Councilmember Andrew Johnson for the Information Technology Subcommittee.
Thank you, Council Vice President Clinton. And before us today, we have a presentation updating us on the outsourcing transition, which obviously is a very large project and undertaking, and it has been relatively quiet, probably, from a council member perspective on that, so we thought maybe it would be good to find out where things are at and how we're doing. So that will turn over to Mr. Dahl.
Good morning, Chair Johnson, committee members. Otto Dahl, Chief Information Officer for the city of Minneapolis. I'd like to start by giving you just a general overview. As you know, we are transitioning between our outsourcing providers, we're moving from Unisys to a new company, One Neck. We're also insourcing two major functions back into the city. One is the desk-side support team, those are the folks that come into your office space to work on your devices, and we are currently fully staffed in that area. And the second area is our service desk, and those are the, if you will, the help desk function that people call when they need services and/or need a problem resolved. We are currently 85% staffed there. We do have three offers out on the street, and if those are accepted, we will be at 100% in that function as well. Also, and I'll be talking a little bit more at length, there is going to be a new interface between IT and our clients, the city departments and their staffs. The software system that drives that interface is called Service Now, and you're going to find that that is an experience much like you're used to when you go out and get something on Amazon or other like services. And all of this is actually going to go live on November 30th of this year. There's, was a mention of our efforts in recruiting. We've had a total of, as I mentioned, 30 of the 33 people are on staff, and we're looking for three others, that we have those offers out to. And we made use of the programmed IT-ready under the Tech Hire Initiative, and actually hired five of our eight entry-level positions through that effort. And it has helped us in this year achieving 15% increase in staffing of people with color, people of color, that has allowed us to get far more diversity on the IT staff. We now sit at 27% of the staff is made up of people of color, 29% are female. And so those efforts continue. And in particular, the move strategy that we use, and hopefully people have not experienced any challenges, because we surely haven't heard about them, we have been moving over IT assets from the Unisys world to One Neck since early August. And what we basically do, we do this over a weekend, we actually physically make the cut on a Sunday, and then when people come to work on Monday, they're actually working in new environments. We've been very successful, I believe, because we've had very few problems come up, and they've been very minor and handled immediately by staff. As I mentioned, we've been doing this since August, early August, and with the switch over of Public Works Construction Management And with the switch over of Public Works Construction Management System, that's the Bentley software, this coming weekend, we will have approximately 80% of the IT assets shifted over to One Neck. And again, we're scheduled to have everything over by the end of November. What we'd like is that December is what we call steady state and just actually being in a situation of just running on One Neck with, if you will, sort of just Unisys in the background. Now, there really are a number of other changes that we've implemented relative to this switch in provider. As you may recognize, IT is being a reimbursable entity. We charge for our services. The primary way that we get money to operate is through an allocation model that's based on a number of PCs, laptops, that people in the departments have. And that's not changing. But what is happening is there are a number of fees that people have actually had problems with in the past that were going to be eliminated. We don't need to charge for changes, specific changes, what we used to call IMAX, because we do that work with our own people now. We also are not charging for the, those one-off programs that people have on their PCs, what we call the Tier Four support, because again, we're supporting that internally, just like we now own the devices on the desktop, so there's no lease charges or managed services charges as well. We're also going to take a different approach with storage than we have in the past. Departments would often get notifications from us that you are in a position of running out of space and to please clean up your activity. We are going to look at space or treat space as an enterprise asset. We will keep up with the growth that we've been able to see over the last several years, and we'll track that to determine if we feel that it's growing at an unacceptable rate. Otherwise, we are just going to keep going. And the reason we're doing this is because we want to stop some behaviors that we've seen in staff, and that is, is they've been taking their data and throwing it off on media, on storage devices external that are not being backed up, et cetera. And so we really want people to keep their data on the systems that are set up by the IT department, because that data is being backed up and is survivable. We are also changing our orientation for the actual PCs and monitors, keyboards, and the like that you see in the office. We're maintaining an inventory of that, but we're going to treat all of those devices as, again, an enterprise asset. And so if a person leaves, we will reclaim that device and reissue either to a department where maybe they're replacing that position or the position is being moved around. Gives us an opportunity to clean up that device, set it for the new person, make sure that the technology that's on it is appropriate for the work of that particular individual. And if someone has a new hire or whatever, we'll be pulling that from a pool of devices that we will have. We do refreshes today at enterprise level. We understand what the refresh rates are. We also understand the increase in devices over the years based on observation. And so we have turned around and we are building this into our base allocation model, so departments won't be charged for increasing, or for additional PCs for new staff, et cetera. And one of the focuses as well, that's hardware. There's also software, and a lot of times departments buy licenses for software that's on their staff's desktops. And if, for some reason, someone no longer needs that license or whatever, because they bought it, they would sort of put it in their drawer. And what we really want is those types of software products to be viewed from an enterprise standpoint, so that if a department no longer needs a license, then that license can be used by some other department user across the enterprise. Naturally, the department will have first dibs on that software that they originally had, but our intent is to ensure that we don't have departments going out and needlessly buying extra licenses for a product, that someone else had a license and because of a change in function or change in staffing levels or whatever, are just sitting in someone in another department's desktop. Again, we want to be as cost-effective with these resources, because as one can quite imagine, some of these products, when you have multiple copies, multiple versions of the software out there, can add up in cost. So we're taking that approach with software, much like what we're doing with the PC hardware, et cetera, in our new way of trying to accomplish things. One of our rallying cries for this whole effort has been that we say internally, "We're IT." And the reason we say that is because we're no longer tied to a business model that our outsourcer has when it comes to those touchpoints with our users, with the people in the departments and the departments overall. And so because of that, we can basically set the way we feel we need to relate and work with departments in meeting their technology needs. And there's really two main initiatives that we've been working towards. One is what we call low effort, or what the industry calls low effort. And what I mean by that is, we want our clients, we want departments to have the least amount of effort to get the resources, the technology resources that they need. And so we drive certain capabilities that allow users to easily get either a problem fixed, or to get new technology, or to get a refresh of technology. We worked through surveys and customer journey mapping exercises with the departments to understand the pain points of our current processes, so that we could create new processes that were much more effective. For instance, one of the biggest headaches that departments have is when they get new employees, and sort of the onboarding activities associated with aligning technology for that new hire. And so we are completely reworking that with HR to allow us to have a much smoother and a more effective process for onboarding of employees relative to the technology that they make use of. The other major initiative the staff has been sensitive to is, we want to increase the productivity through the use of technology, not so much in bringing in new technology, even though that effort is always underway, but more importantly, in our view, is getting staff to understand the capabilities of the technologies that are currently available to them, and doing a much better job of ensuring that they can understand how technology may be able to help them in whatever their work is for the city. And so we are taking a much more proactive set of actions to allow folks to truly understand what really turns out to be a lot of potential technologies in the city's coffers today. And one of those things that people are going to see with this new service model is the fact that, yes, you've always been able to email or call us. In today's world, a lot of people like to, you know, instant message chat, other sorts of ways of communicating, and we're going to accept those. We're also ensuring that people are going to be in a position of talking to someone that can relate to the technology, what I like to call ecosystems, that they are used to. It used to be that you came to work to get all the neat, cool technology, and these days, it seems, all the neat and cool technologies at home, what people are using in their personal lives, also potentially for new employees, what they might have been using at previous employers. And so we want to be taking our staff and ensuring that they are comfortable with the various ecosystems that have grown up in the IT industry, i.e. the Apple and the Android and the Windows worlds. Yes, we have people who are experts in those areas. For instance, in the Apple world, we actually hired a couple of folks who worked in Apple's Genius Bar concept. So we can get into deep technical weeds if we need to with staff, but I want the people, particularly on the help desk and the desk side support and others within my organization, to really be able to relate and help people who might be coming from a different ecosystem deal with some of the systems and technologies that they have to when they're employed with the city. We're also, we have an extensive knowledge base that we've added to by buying some knowledge about IT, as well as adding our own experiences over the years, and we're going to allow users to search that. A lot of people just like to look answers up themselves. You know, it is the age of Google, of asking Siri or someone for an answer, and those capabilities will be available for staff as well. Needless to say, they can always contact us directly in some fashion, and we'll take care of them from there. What you're going to also see in the service model is, as I mentioned, it's more of an Amazon-like experience. We're going to, at the point of you deciding, staff or department deciding on some technology, we're going to tell you whether or not that technology is, if you will, let's say it's a software, is it in stock? When are we going to be able to deliver that service? What is it going to cost, if it does cost? All the sorts of things that you expect today, for instance, in your shopping, online shopping experience with companies around the world. Also, there will be shorter timeframes to achieve things. Probably one of the most dramatic changes is when a department needed an information system to be established and they needed what we refer to as a server computer to run that application. Our current world typically took six to eight weeks to acquire, configure, and bring up that server. That is now going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of two to three days. And so our ability to react to the needs of departments is going to be radically different than in the past, because again, we know that time is of importance at a lot of the time, and we're trying to shorten our ability to deliver services, even if they're new to the city or new to the department. There's going to be a lot of training that's going to go on in November. You'll notice from this training schedule, there's a lot of use of video. We're doing that for a couple of reasons. One is, we're finding that the younger generations like to, if they want to understand how to do some process or task, they like to look at a short, minute and a half, two and a half-minute type of video, where they can learn, see someone accomplish the activity. We also then can make use of these learning tools for new employees when they come onboard, and that's a very cost-effective way for us to develop those and then be able to reuse that. We will have some classroom sessions as necessary, but our focus is more on leveraging the use of video for the aforementioned reasons. And then finally, we are attempting to, you know, close everything out with Unisys, effectively running the show, starting November 30th. But the actual contractual arrangement is through the end of December, December 31st. There is one thing I wanted to point out to folks, because this is a very important aspect. Obviously, all of the city's data that was within the Unisys Data Center, we, and it's in the contract with Unisys, that data will be wiped and destroyed sufficiently to federal standards, so that if those devices ever make it out to the secondary market and end up heavens knows where in the world, that the city's data won't be sitting on it to be found. And that's a very important aspect of this whole effort. So in reality, there is some work to be done in December, but nonetheless, that will be accomplished by the end of the contract, December 31st. And be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Do we have any questions? All right. Well, thank you. I think that the fact we haven't heard a lot about such a massive transition is a credit and, you know, evidence of the good work going on with your department and the smoothness of this in transitioning big systems from one, even just one data center to another, is a huge undertaking. And you're already more than halfway done with that, about 80% done with that, got the hires all lined up. I mean, things are going very well from this front, and I know my colleagues and the rest of the city staff appreciate the way that this has been handled in such a smooth manner. So thank you, good luck with the rest of the transition, and we appreciate all the work. Then I'll turn it back over to Council Vice President Clinton.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. So we have a few more committee reports. The next is Health, Environment, and Community Engagement with Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward eight items for council approval on Friday. The first two have to do with appointments, one to our Minneapolis Advisory Committee on people with disabilities, and the other with our Public Health Advisory Committee. Then we have several items that have to do with contracts and grants that were also referred to Ways and Means. The first is an urban forestry project, accepting $10,000 from an environmental initiative to support the urban forestry project. Second is authorizing acceptance of $125,000 from the U.S. Department of Justice for our youth violence prevention work. The next one is authorizing a contract to do our Healthy Living Program through the Health Department. The sixth item on our agenda is authorizing an agreement for a group purchasing program membership to support our school-based clinics. The next item is authorizing Ryan White HIV/AIDS Treatment Extension Act of 2009 intergovernmental agreement between the State Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Human Services in Hennepin and Ramsey Counties. This lets us continue our work with the Ryan White program for the Minneapolis and St. Paul area. And the last item is authorizing negotiation and execution of our solar electricity subscription agreements in November of 2015 for up to 12 million kilowatt hours of electricity. This is through the Metropolitan Council's RFP process to participate in community solar gardens. And we are also moving a staff direction to have our property services, energy manager staff, work to prepare our own request for proposals for a city-led community solar garden initiative. And that RFP will be drafted and returned to the committee before February 1st, 2016. I'm happy to answer any questions on those items.
Thank you. Next, we have Intergovernmental Relations, and there was one item on the agenda here. It was regarding the Federal Clean Power Plan, and we updated, gave direction to update our federal legislative agenda to support the EPA's Clean Power Plan rules, and directed the city attorney to work with other departments to coordinate the city's role in defending the Clean Power Plan. So that was the action in IGR. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management with Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have three items, and I'll just do a grand total of about $1.7 million in funds that we are receiving. The first item is Body Camera Implementation Program Grants. The second is a National Initiative of Building Community Trust and Justice Multi-Strategy Coordinator Grant. And the third item is the 2015 Urban Area Security Initiative Grant.
Thank, excuse me. Thank you very much. Not seeing questions. So next, we have Transportation and Public Works with that Vice Chair, Councilmember Paul Misano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Transportation and Public Works brings forward 11 items for consideration on Friday. The first two items are... The first two items are assessments. The first is special service district assessments, and the second is water and sewer service line repair assessments. Both of these items will direct transmittal of the assessment roles to Hennepin County. We're going to make a clerical adjustment there at full council. It shouldn't say, we don't believe it should say, the Hennepin County Auditor. We believe it should just be to Hennepin County, to their assessment office. Item number three is the Sixth Avenue North paving project, a variance request for the vertical profile. The next three items are postponement and reduction of assessments for items that we did not get to yet in this 2015 roadwork year. Item number four is Ninth Street South, Eleventh Street South and North, Twelfth Street North-South and Seventh Avenue North. Item number five is St. Anthony Parkway Bridge Street Reconstruction Project. And item number six, the 24th Street East and Snelling Avenue Street Reconstruction. Item number seven is a cancellation and reduction of project scope for 34th Avenue South and 43rd Street East Street Resurfacing Project due to some unique factors in that area. Item number eight will help us to enhance traffic signals along with the county, using federal aid funds for that, and authorizing a cooperative agreement between Hennepin County and ourselves. Item number nine is accepting funding of $95,000 from the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization. Item number 10 is a bid for repair of three of our parking facility's ramps. Item number 11 is sent forward without recommendation to full council. Chair Reich will be bringing forward a motion for council consideration on Friday about the bid for special service districts' no-removal services. I'm happy to answer any questions. One other item I wanted to mention is on item number two. A motion will be distributed on Friday to extend the repayment period from five to 10 years for one of the sewer service repair assessments against the property located at 4140 Chicago Avenue.
Thank you. Next, we have Ways and Means with Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Council Vice President. Ways and Means has 19 items for your consideration on Friday. The first seven are workers' comp claims. There are two personal injury lawsuits and one settlement for a property damage subrogation lawsuit. Item number 11, excuse me, is the donation of billboard display time from Clear Channel Outdoor, as well as the appointments to the Minneapolis Television Network Board. Item number 13 is a bid for trench drain replacement project at the convention center. 14 is the approval of the 2015 Property Tax Special Assessments for delinquent utility charges. Item number 15 is the temporary financing for the Niclet Mall project with U.S. Bank. Item number 16 is a statewide interoperable radio system upgrade, authorizing a contract amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement. And item number 17 is a contract with Equifax Workforce Solutions for Claims Processing. 18 is the contract amendment with Microsoft for premier core support services. Item number 19 is the IT contract with Hennepin County for the Pictometry Aerial Imaging Software License. I'm happy to answer any questions on those 19 items.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Quincy. And finally, we have the Audit Committee with Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Yesterday, we had one of our Audit Committee meetings in which three reports were published as of yesterday, October 20th. The three things we are bringing forward to council, the first is a complaint protocol consultation memo, referring this to full council. Item number two is a report from the Finance Internal Control Program Consult, referring this report with recommendation to refer it to Committee of the Whole for consideration as enterprise-wide applications. Item number three is the Records Management Audit Report, also referring to full council to recommend it go to Committee of the Whole for consideration on next steps. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And I do not see any questions. And with that, I believe we have concluded with our business for today. We adjourned. Thank you.